Routine at six nineteen and if we could stand project legends. Project legends is.
Project legends to the flag, ladies and gentlemen.
United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under our invisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I apologize, I have to somewhere else, but we had some things we needed to vote. And so if we could Joe, could you start with the payroll?
Excuse me, yes payroll warrant number fourteen dash oh four for a hundred and seventy three thousand six forty two and eighty cents.
I'll second that, all in favor?
I abstain.
Okay, and just so everyone knows, we're also voting for our salary in this week, but under the rule of necessity, we had to do that anyway.
Betty, got checks there?
Checks in the mail.
Yeah, don't lose that, that's the important.
Deduction warrant. Deduction warrant number fourteen dash oh two A for twenty eight thousand four sixty five and eighty eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Bill warrant number fourteen dash oh three for one million two hundred and sixty six thousand two hundred and ninety and sixty nine cents.
Second on that?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Alright.
Hi.
Okay, um, we need to vote for me to sign the townstorm water management annual report.
Make a motion that we allow the chairman to sign that report.
So vote, second?
All in favor?
Alright.
Phil, there's a copy of it just up here, right?
Yeah, on your back, okay. Okay, and the other thing was, we have a purchase and sale agreement on the busing property on Center Street, which we will all need to sign, I'm sure everyone saw that previously. And I know that we covered all of our questions and issues on it before.
It was approved by both councilmen and board members.
So if someone could make that motion.
So vote.
Second, and that's only the busing property, correct?
All in favor? That's just the busing, yep.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Okay, um, and I think from there.
How about the Agnes School, do we need to vote, not for you to take care of any of that?
No, you did that initially, at the beginning of the project with the chairman.
Okay. Okay, it's all set.
Okay.
Okay, so I think, you know, there's other correspondences, a couple of the groups that are gonna be coming in, some of them postponed to another meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I believe the only other meeting that you will have will be with the conservation and water department regarding the other two programs.
Yep. John's coming, the fire chief, for twelve instead of tonight.
August twelfth?
At my request, yeah.
Okay. That's a.
At that time, we should have a pretty good idea who applied, correct?
Right.
That was the deadline?
That's the last deadline.
Correct.
Yeah.
The other thing.
And then, and then the recreation, I asked Don if maybe we could call the meeting for Monday before town meeting to have them in.
I think that'll be alright.
'Cause some of the people are going on vacation and it's gonna be too late if we don't.
Right. Yeah, so we'll do it next Monday?
Do we need to approve anybody that's asked to join a board recently?
We can do that at the next meeting.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I gave, I gave you the emails of people applying, and they're all new people.
Alright, I guess, again, I apologize for running out, but.
Okay.
Would you?
Yes, they're down one run.
Okay, I get that way.
Alright, so.
I know, I gotta get to work.
So we continue?
Well.
Um, John Clement won't be here this evening.
No, maybe he know the rest.
Okay, so then we have conservation.
At six thirty.
At night until six thirty, yeah, okay.
But can you and Joe, can you both make it next Monday, which is town meeting night? Joe has a meeting at six thirty with cable, but if we met at six?
Well, he'd be at six, I'll be at six.
For recreation and.
Yeah.
Or six fifteen, whatever recreation could meet and.
Yeah.
It's next, it's, that's a special town meeting?
Yeah.
At what time, seven or seven thirty, seven o'clock, okay.
Seven, seven o'clock, so would that be alright if I post the regular meeting for?
Yeah, break, yeah.
I'll check with Pam, is there six or seven, six fifteen?
I'll tell you, yes. What, do we have people requesting seats on different boards?
Yeah, so. Yes, we had several for zoning board, and several of them, I don't know who they are, they're, they're new to me,
Uh-huh.
so I don't know if you know them, but maybe you wanna bring them in if you don't, to meet them and make the decisions.
This is really exciting, look at this, we got Kathleen Franzen.
Yes.
For the zoning, never met her, I don't know she's.
No, neither.
Michael Wood for zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that Dan McDonald has requested for zoning.
Requested for the separation of.
And then we have, um, who is this, for affordable housing, Sandra Brains, Brains.
Which I've asked Bruce to call her and explain to her, because she wasn't a hundred percent sure, she wanted to know more about it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have someone for cable TV.
And someone for cable TV, nobody's requesting a seat on the board selection.
You can't get a.
I know, it's a tough gang.
This is very exciting, this is.
I'm going to ask Kenny Hamilton to call the person for, is that to hear that cable TV?
For cable, right.
'Cause I, I think he thinks it's a, like a full-time committee, an affiliate.
A full-time committee or a full-time job?
Full-time committee, but they don't meet like that, so I want.
They, they meet like quarterly, don't you?
Uh, they meet, yeah, they meet, they met a lot when they were going through the initial contract that we now have.
Yeah.
And then they'll meet basically, I know they're working on a policy procedure manual with their attorney, and I guess now they're looking to upgrade some of the older equipment we have, so they, I know Chris is getting a business together for the committee for that, so I can go up to bid with it, but after that's done, they, they could go a year without meeting, it's sometimes, it's just nothing going on.
There's nothing on.
So Kenny can explain that to let the person decide whether he wants to.
Exactly, that's probably the best, you're right.
So you're gonna put him, how, what's customary, how do we, if someone expresses an interest in a board or a commission, what is, what is the normal process?
For boards like that, affordable housing, cable TV, I would have the chairman call them.
Yeah. Okay.
Discuss what they do, what their requirements are.
Okay.
And then they, if they're still interested, they inform me, and if the selectmen don't know who they are, they will invite them to a meeting just to introduce themselves, and then they'll appoint them as a rule. And for committees like conservation and, you know, your regular, every day, every week committees,
Yeah.
um, the selectmen, sometimes the chairman invites the person over to a conservation meeting, for example, to let them sit in and see.
Oh, okay, so a little bit of a process too, there's not, you know.
Yeah, yeah. It all depends on.
On what, how the chair wants to.
Yeah.
Well, we're not voting on anything but.
No, that was for your interest to know that people are applying.
Betty, I would always be in favor, I would be in favor of having a chance to meet people, even if I know them, because other people don't.
Is that right?
I, I made that recommendation way back, that I think people should come in and say hi to us and ask them questions and.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly.
And I think we've adopted that, sometimes it doesn't happen, but most times I think it should, don't you?
Yeah. Okay. So anything you could do to move that on is.
I would, you know, I want them first to feel comfortable in what they're applying for.
Yeah, exactly, this way here by the fall, all these positions are, you know, are filled, or as many as possible, that's exciting.
I think it was 'cause I added in my notice that we'd be calling on the children next, but no one came forward.
Yeah.
Were we reading the age requirement?
Maybe the Daisy Scouts would be interested in.
Nobody saw I posted a fifty thousand dollar salary to do these, but.
You posted that, I hope you get a lot of money in the bank.
I see, um.
I wouldn't even joke.
We have a notice here, a notice, correspondence from a young man for an Eagle Scout project, did.
I don't, I don't know where that came from.
Do you know? You don't?
I think like we approved.
A project being done, do you know? Um, well, it says he's thanking Mr. Rochelle, Mr. Dufanet.
You know, normally they come before us and tell us what the project is.
That there's a project, he's looking to be. Looking forward to his Eagle Scout project, but we never heard of this young man, correct?
No, not till I know it, unless you had a meeting, I didn't go to it.
Right. Oh, maybe somebody could call us and tell us how that went and.
Well, I, I wanted you to see it, and then I'll get in touch with the two gentlemen that were named, to see if they can tell me what.
Right. Yeah, they, they probably, 'cause most times the Eagle Scouts do come in here before they start a project.
It's already, it's already been done, I mean, it's like.
Right, and, like, up on Center Street, remember they cleared the brush away and put a little area in for.
Washington Hall.
Washington Hall project, um.
The trash bins that they put up.
They did some trails over on Up Tech Road, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah.
Remember the beautiful job they did on Perry Park a few, a few years ago, they really cleaned up Perry Park.
Yeah. So. Sean, I guess you did a very good job, and we'd love to meet you, come on down. So, anything else, Joe, you wanna talk about while we're waiting and this is.
Yeah, I, I just, I filed some correspondence, which I, I think is kind of interesting, because I know the last time we had a discussion about naming buildings and bridges, and we had the, um, AJ from Senator Tarr's office come, and I, I wanted to, for, for your reading, Betty, and also for, for Donnie, and whoever, whoever's interested, 'cause it's, it's part of the public record now here, is I pulled some articles from local newspapers that basically talked about two issues of things going wrong when people don't name things properly. And the one that I lived through myself, which was really embarrassing, and was, you know, kind of a problem, was when one of our fields at the high school was named, and then it had to be delisted, because it wasn't done through a proper process, and, 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 and it was kind of embarrassing.
Okay, so this football field dedication is old, neat, okay, this is.
And that's why. Yeah, these are all, these are all newspaper articles, yeah, the one about the football dedication is October twenty, twenty eleven, and I, and I brought, I wanted to bring these up just so that we have in our mind.
There was, there was a recent story.
There's one about a bridge now in Huber.
And then the bridge problem, recent, I've got two letters about the bridge, and then the, the field dedication of Penn Tucket, two, what I would call a precedent of, of things going wrong when we don't have a process, a transparent process
Wasn't it just.
of naming buildings and bridges.
Wasn't that just in the paper again, about the field and the?
Yeah, it was, three times, yeah, it's kinda sad, because everyone agrees that the gentleman that the bridge was named after is deserving.
Yeah.
What people are complaining about is lack of, a whole host of issues, lack of transparency, not having input, all of the things that we wrestled with a couple of weeks ago, when we said, you know, how the heck do we do this if we even wanna do this? So I don't, Donnie didn't wanna talk about it.
I'm talking about the Penn Tucket issue though.
Penn Tucket?
I just read that in the paper.
Oh, recently again?
About, what do you call that, is it a snack shop or something?
Press box?
Press box?
Press box, yeah.
See, press box and field, there was still controversies as to whether.
Recently?
I didn't even know that.
Yeah, maybe a month ago?
Oh, I remember, it was part of the article when they were writing about the future, talking about putting the fields in front, stuff like that.
In any time, was it part of that?
I think it was supposed to be recently dedicated.
So, all good intentions.
I remember reading those.
All good intentions, that's why, uh, in my, what I was proposing last time was a seat of kind of elaborate, but it's all my wish to hopefully see an open, transparent, and engaging process where a lot of people have input. And I will tell you, I was very impressed with the gentleman that came here, the veterans groups, and how they, you know, you know, they, I was impressed with their proposal.
Or what to.
They wanna.
Research.
Research it, they wanna reach out to their counterparts in April, they wanna name it something that doesn't offend anybody, kinda generic, so, I mean, that's part of the process, so that's kind of exciting to see, so. But yeah, these articles really brought to bear, you know, what can go wrong, and we, we just don't want that to happen at all. If you can prevent it.
No, we don't need to embarrass anybody.
No, we don't wanna.
Or anybody's feelings, um, I see with Lenny Mara on the tip.
Lenny Mara was blamed for something.
He, she said he wasn't involved.
He wasn't.
But once it's in the newspaper, you know, once it's in the newspaper, people seem to think it's the truth.
Oh, yeah. The truth.
Did you ever notice that?
Yeah, no, I've had a few issues.
I've noticed that, that, you know, it's, if it's in the newspaper, it's got to be true.
I have to find, I have to find that, I've gotta find out what's going on, I didn't know that the press box is back in the news again.
Yeah, wasn't it about a month ago?
Yeah, I thought, I think it was in the article when they were talking about doing the fields over and all that stuff, I thought it was part of that article, but I did get it wrong. I, I do remember reading something about, like you said, that timeframe, it just came around the context.
I thought someone was going back there again, trying to, yeah, yeah, I thought.
Oh, really, that it renamed again?
How wait.
Well, the, the son of a coach and a coach and a, somebody else.
Yeah, I remember that, I, I mean, I remember the context, I do remember the article, you know, like, oh, yeah.
Well. Does the school district have a policy about naming fields and press boxes and, you know, do, do they?
Obviously not.
I guess not, we have to kind of invent it, that's what I was suggesting last time, I guess.
And should they? And should we go to the school committee and ask them if they plan to do that?
Oh, I wouldn't.
That's one place that we don't have to be concerned about, that they have a policy and procedure on how to do these things.
What? I don't think they do, Betty, that's why there's problems.
Right, but do you think that that's our place to go there and ask if they would look into it?
It could be. I could find out, I could, that's a good idea, yeah.
So that. And I don't, I don't know how something gets named, I really don't know.
Well, the Bagnow School was named at town meeting.
It was at town.
Named.
Well, I think we could do to help, hopefully, understand how to do it if they wish to do it. As AJ said, from Senator Tarr's office, he said, we have a right to know, we can make that open decision. Whether, whether it will be approved in our state, it's up to whether we can act either by ourselves or just. But the school, there's no, that's really our decision, we own the building, but that's a good idea. What I'll do is, I'll find out if the school can have a policy on naming structures, I'll be there and find out.
I was trying to.
Oh, okay, will we print my name on there?
Which doctor's side?
Since I'm in the insurance business, yeah.
Okay, now you were my mother calling it before, I mean.
All these important people are just, yeah, it doesn't cut it off, it may be hard to miss.
Like, do you want to, like, reveal this and tell us, do you want us to know?
Well, firstly, I've got, um, last time, that we had a, a question on what were the costs to be, the purchases, and how would those be paid for, so, um, we water department, conservation, we met with Woody Cammett to see what each cost on his plan was, and we were able to get that information, and we were able to pare it down to the essentials for all the engineering, so, um, a couple of assumptions that still exist related to that is that, um, since the town is going to be the, uh, person applying for all these permits, that, um, all the permit fees will be waived, and, um, the total of the engineering costs, um, are somewhere in the twenty eight thousand to thirty one thousand dollar, uh, estimate. Those are the bare essentials.
That's what's going to be waived?
No, that's what we're gonna have to pay.
We're gonna have to waive that, what are we waiving?
We're waiving the permit fees, so these are the engineering costs, Woody Cammett.
Yeah, I asked, so I understand.
What will permit fee, like, uh, um, if you apply for a notice of intent with conservation or.
Oh, okay, alright, those local permit fees.
Like, yeah, yeah, 'cause they're all local permits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then there's one other permit, we met with, um, Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program and DEP. Uh, last week, we had a good meeting with them, and they kind of gave us the idea that it's not gonna be too complicated to do this, and one of the, potentially one of the natural heritage, uh, possible permits will be waived also. So that's gonna make things easier and cheaper, so, as I say, we're at the twenty eight to thirty one thousand dollar ballpark for engineering. The other costs, legal costs, I think, I know Greg told us today that the, we've expended about fourteen thousand dollars on legal costs so far, that's been charged to CPC, and we're expecting there could be another, um, say another fourteen thousand, so legal costs are in the realm of about twenty to twenty eight thousand dollars. So the total cost projected is about fifty nine thousand dollars, so how are we gonna pay for that? Um, we looked at all the potential sources, we had Greg check all the accounts, so, um, today, the water department agreed to, uh, commit twenty thousand dollars towards it. We have, uh, potentially twenty thousand dollars of open space money, so I have to get conservation to approve that, and the last one will be CPC, Community Preservation Committee. We have to get CPC to commit twenty thousand dollars, that'll give us sixty thousand dollars to work with.
And that's just about where we need to be?
Yeah, yeah, right, and I, I think those two are doable, and I, I, I'm not too concerned that conservation or CPC is, because we have a lot of, uh, effort in the game already, so, you know.
Do you have money making conservation?
Yeah, there's an open space account that actually, you know, fits in for things like this exactly, so.
I thought I heard last week when you guys were.
Oh, we are.
Broke.
Yes, but this is, only can be used for open space related.
Okay, so it's designated.
Yes, right, it's for, it's, it's an account that.
When do they come in? You know, we carried on the ledger fact, ever, where do they come in?
The state, the state, uh, we gave the state a piece of property that they wanted for crane on, and they gave us forty thousand dollars.
We put it into an account to be used for future purchases towards property, that's what I'm saying, okay.
Yes. Right?
Alright, so just for clarifying for the public, as you know, this is something I do routinely.
Yes.
In case people just chimed in and they're eating supper and they're watching this excellent program.
They can't hear.
They can't hear.
They can't hear us, they wish they could hear the first half minutes anyways. So, the, 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 the services or the engineering services that need to be done in order for us to move forward with the acquisition of the Maddenley and the Angelinee properties will require almost sixty thousand dollars. Fifty eight thousand is what you said.
Yes, right.
Two properties, you're talking.
For those two properties, not the busing.
So, busing, there may be some of the legal fees, you know, they're kind of behind us now 'cause they signed that purchase and same.
Okay. Alright, and now, if you could explain for the public, you said that twenty thousand potentially from water department, twenty thousand may be available from the open space, and then twenty thousand from CPC, what are those funds? Are they rainy day money, what do you call those funds, how long does it take to build that money, and how do you replenish that money after we spend it? Just a kind of a helicopter view, just for educating the public, and quite frankly, me too.
Sure. Yeah. Well, the open space money is money that we got from the state for transferring property to them. We've had that for about, uh, the past ten years, and we've slowly been spending it on things like this. It's specifically earmarked for open space, appraisals, purchases, that type of thing, so.
Okay. And the source was the state of Massachusetts, for a land that.
Yes, that we transferred.
We transferred, okay.
Yes, so that's, that won't be replenished per se, but it's available for this, specifically this type of thing. And then, uh, for CPC, the twenty thousand would come out of administrative funds, which is part of what's collected and set aside each year for this type of thing. Twenty thousand, as long as it relates back to a particular project or something we're doing that fits into the three criteria for CPA, which is housing, um, open space, or historic, so in this case, it fits with that.
And what does CPC stand for?
That's the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, alright, so, now, and that is, does, does have a mechanism for restoring money, because it's part of our tax bill
Yes.
when a certain percentage comes out of CPA funds.
Yes. Right, and each year, we, we put a certain amount aside for administrative costs.
And the water department, component?
We're gonna take that probably out of expense line at, at this point.
Really?
Um, we may, well, 'cause we, we can make a definitive, um, plan of where the money was gonna come from.
Okay.
Um, so at this point, just to make sure that we can move ahead, and that, uh, you know, it was gonna move forward, that, uh, we take it out of expenses, that's what.
So the committee will make that decision, your committee?
Yes, we will.
Okay, and you make the.
Remind, remind, excuse me? It may, it may take some further investigation exactly where we're gonna get all that, but at this point, to make a vote, a legal vote, expenses are, it's gonna be a lot for them.
And what's, for both of you, what is your timeframe for making this money available? Because I know that time is of the essence and we're, we're eager to move forward at a clip. If everything comes together with the votes and the meeting and the, when is all this money gonna be made available? Also, three weeks, two weeks, six months?
Yeah, I don't think I have the money, well, from what I remember, I have the money of my own, but it's gonna be, um, some of it's, some of the engineering and what else to transpire, what's where it gets each part of this to get it done.
Okay.
Um, with Maddenley's property, um, you have the state involved, uh, so there's, there's a lot of still, a lot of wheels to, uh, make this thing, uh, fall through and out.
But the money from water is available right now, yes, we voted that.
We voted it.
So, you think we'll get it done this summer, before the summer's over?
Isn't it October?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're, we're shooting for October still, right?
Alright.
Okay, I'm not looking for a commitment, I'm just trying to get a sense, you know, this.
Yeah, the, uh, uh.
And again, also for the public to understand what's going on, yeah.
Sure. On the open space, it requires a conservation vote, so I have to schedule a meeting for that. And as soon as we take a vote, it will be available. And for the CPC money, I have a meeting that I'm trying to get scheduled for next Monday night. So, it will be available for the week, we're handing that vote.
Okay.
Thank you. That's great.
Um, the twenty thousand dollars that's coming out of water and sewer, do you see that being passed on to taxpayers in any way, shape or form as a increase in their rates?
We don't at this point.
Like, they gotta ask up, because I'm sure people will be asking us.
Sure, absolutely. We're just, we're just, you know, this meeting just happened today.
Right, it's fast.
You know, in the defense of Mr. Camet, it, it was, it was the last minute thing that he put together for worst case scenario. So, today, we kind of cleaned up all of it and, uh, you know, we, we haven't had enough time to sit down and figure out exactly where we're gonna go. So, we're gonna make the vote, we decided tonight that, uh, that money would be available right away for that, not gonna take.
And I'll always ask this question as a courtesy if, if it could be answered. Is there anything you need specifically or any specific help you need from the board selectmen to move forward?
Well, um, you know, we still need to work hard to get these permits done. Um, so, Woody Camet will be the point person, but, you know, anything that the town can do will save us money. So, potentially, you know, he may come back to us and say, you know, uh, can, can the conservation, you know, uh, grant this waiver or, you know, waive this cost or whatever. So, we just need particular departments, at this point, it could be conservation, planning board and selectmen, I think are the only three approving boards that we perceive on the earth removal permit, the conservation permits and then a couple of, um, zoning related permits and planning, so.
Well, any specific twists or questions?
You're saying in the spirit of cooperation?
Yes, right, exactly.
That we work together?
Yes.
Delays are gonna cost us money.
Right.
If we get bogged down anyplace. So, if we can all work as a team and make this happen on time.
Right.
Something we're hoping will happen?
Yes.
We're all hoping will happen?
Exactly.
So, we don't miss any deadlines and we're not getting, uh, backlog and any attorneys?
Right, right.
Well, anything that's, you know, that, that requires attention, you know, obviously, the protocol is you wanna address it with, uh, Donnie, our chair. And if we have to have an extra meeting here and there, we'll, we'll move things along, that's fine too.
Sure.
Because we've met on Friday afternoon before to meet a deadline.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have to stick with our schedule, if you need a, if you need us to meet, let us know. Let, let Donnie know, he's the chair and, and then, you know, I know Betty and I are available and.
When does, when does the planning board meet? That's the only board that has a.
Couple times a month, uh, usually you, twice a month.
Last.
Well, Charlie might know because he goes to the meetings, I think.
I think it's like the second and fourth Tuesday when.
Is it here in this building or is it someplace else?
It's here.
Right here.
Alright, so we've come full circle because when we had this proposal last time, we had a hundred thousand, we didn't know where it was coming from. Now, we've almost cut it in half and we kind of sort of know where it's coming from.
Less than half.
And, and we're not doing an override.
Much less than that, actually, much less.
Or extra fees or break fights or anything.
If it's sixty thousand.
Oh, it actually isn't.
No, we're just proposing, I mean, the proposal's only thirty-seven, they're guessing on legal.
Yeah.
That wouldn't even in the last one.
Yeah, we didn't even have that.
The more efficient we are and get things our, done our own, the less, the less that legal bill's gonna be, obviously, we all know that, right?
Yeah, but it sometimes slows down the process as well, you know.
Yeah. Oh, if you, if, if we do it on our own.
As long as everybody works together, truly, truly actually listed that, that, that'll be nice.
Yeah, we're, yeah, yeah. I, 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 I think Betty's absolutely right, we, we're in, we're in this together, so, you know, call us or call Don if you need something from us and if not, we'll, you know, we'll, we're gonna open pray, we'll get it done quick and properly.
The planning board may not be meeting in August.
I know, I heard some boards say they weren't, weren't meeting in August, I don't know what meeting I was listening to, but does zoning take August off or does planning take August there?
The zoning board isn't meeting in August, yeah. But I, I believe while Haley said, in, within my hearing distance to something, that he wasn't, they weren't meeting in August, but I can check.
Well, we could ask them to, you know, for this matter and I think, I think they will.
If they need it, yeah.
I think they will, yeah.
If they have a problem. You know, they do have that difficulty sometimes.
Okay.
Do they have to all be at different times?
To what?
There's already a meeting at the same time. Alright, just thinking of the, the move. Do they, do they mean more efficient as they can just kind of meet all together at once? And we might be able to go ahead and spearhead this and get everything that he needs for each department that could be previewed and then just sit down and get it done.
Seems the most effective way to do it.
You mean have a meeting of all the boards that are involved?
Yeah, at least the joint meeting, yeah.
That'd be easier, wouldn't it?
Yep.
Be more accomplished in a very short period of time than everybody at the table, try to have it go back, discuss it and then.
Right. Gee, I didn't know about that, why don't we work around this, right?
We had a very productive meeting this morning, we run that one.
Yeah, that's great.
Good.
That's a great idea.
Good point. Um, you had one person from all your, you're, you're talking, bringing in a lot of people, that sometimes doesn't get.
I know, but.
Just, it just keeps dragging on.
If they're going out at the same time in the building, might be useful.
So, we would have just the chairs and the heads of these boards?
Well, they have to all be there.
No, because they think a lot.
So, they can actually vote too?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright.
Fine.
If you have, um, information, we could email for them to look at ahead of time. That saves a lot, you know.
Shoot for August twentieth, Monday.
Well, you don't know if Woody's gonna have whatever you need.
Okay, well, shoot for the day.
Woody works pretty closely with plannings, so that might be a bonus.
Yeah. Yeah. But it also.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, having that meeting before Labor Day, I think would be a good reasonable goal.
But you have to wait for Woody to do it.
No, I understand.
But he understands.
Push him.
You, you guys.
Jim will be on the phone with him before nine o'clock tonight.
It won't happen, it's a miracle. Yeah.
You guys did a great job, I mean, and I know there's a lot of work involved, it's pretty impressive, thank you.
The last, um, issue is the purchase and sale, so, um, you signed the busing one tonight, that's, that's a big breakthrough, I'd say. And so, we're left with, uh, Angelineys and Maddenleys. Now, on Angelineys, I believe Nancy sent in the latest one.
Oh, yeah. Um, I can't remember a lot, I haven't found out that much of the reason.
We're, we're updating it last week when they were talking about it, they sent back, they said those things I asked for.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I said it, uh.
The things I, the couple changes I asked for in May haven't been incorporated yet.
Right, and then.
And we got that back Friday.
Friday, which I wasn't here.
And I told him, Jimmy, you got it, right?
Yeah, but still, it doesn't have at least the world naming in it, yeah.
And you tried to trail email the way you said you, you, you'd like you guys to put in what you wanted to say or something there?
Okay, I just, I put, actually.
Yeah, there's a trail, and that's why I left the trail up below if they.
He said that, he said that's up to Angeliney to suggest not for us to be doing it.
He did, he does, he did.
Well, I'm just, for him, for him to put it on, on, for his end, not for us to put it in, this is what he said.
Right.
Did he know it?
It was, it was something, it should be a request from this hour, there's a bit of a request of writing that.
Right.
Who, who is he, who you speaking about?
It's Angelina Lee.
Angelina Lee.
Angeline, but it'd be better, Angeline.
Attorney Ickman, attorney Ickman, so.
Ickman, okay.
Okay, so at this point, then, then it's gotta be pretty much complete, we can send it to him?
Yes, right, we can send it to him since Friday.
Okay, we don't, we don't have another.
So, the suggestion that he writes back, like, could you please put this plot in?
Yeah, exactly.
It seems like a very doable, quite, I don't know.
He, he isn't using.
Would you think, Jim? Spokesperson.
Well, he isn't using an attorney right now.
He's not?
No.
Kinda don't blame it, you can do it yourself.
It's all ghostly.
At this point, a lot.
It's gonna, he must have somebody he uses, he's on, but.
Okay, so that's good, um.
I will mail it to him tomorrow.
Uh, on the Maddenley one, we are kind, we are kind of, I would say, at a slight impasse because we've sent, uh, her attorney has everything that the town wants and answered her requests. But, you know, you, you got that letter from her at your last meeting.
She had a deadline too, for us to be in touch with Russell Shannon.
Yes. Yes, to be at the, at the end of the month, so it would be like Wednesday. So, I'm not sure.
Actually, it says August thirty-first.
August thirty-first.
August thirty-first?
It says, yeah. We don't agree to terms, so.
But no, wait, didn't she say fifteen, fifteen days? She did fifteen days from when we saw her.
Yeah, fifteen days, right.
She did, she said right there, we.
July thirtieth.
I would appreciate an official answer within the next fifteen business days, but on number seven, it says, I have been approached by other parties that have a goal, but cannot agree with that, so it's like August thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, the property will be listed.
Yeah, well, that's not answering your question, that's fifteen days.
Right, so we have fifteen days, so. Now, I know Mike answered a couple and a couple of them, we basically look for you guys, for some guys, I didn't wanna add what.
I gave you what Mike sent, it should be anything, I don't know. Was buyer an email?
So, what, what were they looking for from us, if anybody's?
Well, number two.
I gave you the letter, too, I should have looked for it.
I was just scanning it, go, number, number two and number seven aren't really request information, they're more just statements that you can.
Okay.
Right, they, they don't require a response.
But there is one that might be a little, which is basically number three of her letter.
Alright.
Because our attorney is holding that that pipe of applause is illegal because what she's referring to is chain of custody of potential hazardous waste. And the law states that, that chain of custody goes back, you can't waive that chain of custody. And that seems, might be a little bit of a holdup here.
And what's our legal counsel say on, on that?
Can't do it.
Can't do it.
The law says you can't do it.
Has he, do you know if he's communicated that to her, to this Maddenley's attorney?
Yeah, I've seen emails back and forth that they argue about, he's adamant that the chain of custody on as, potential hazardous waste goes through the history of who owns the property, you can't waive your obligations to it.
Well, with these.
Cradle to grave.
It's cradle to grave, like Jack said, and if that's an insistence on her part, I don't know how we get around it.
Have you seen the emails? Have you seen the emails?
Oh, so many. Oh, so many.
I don't wanna sound, I don't wanna sound foolish, but has our attorney attached?
He, he references the law and everything, precedents?
Precedents. Legal references and.
And I'm not sure her attorney hasn't, has advised her that this is the way to go, it's gonna be what she wants.
Okay. Okay, I thought, I thought that he, he looked as, I thought you, it was close, that he looked at everything our attorney said and he said, he still said no. So, you don't know if he's advising her to.
Her attorney very well would be advising her that our attorney is correct and she doesn't wanna hear.
Right, we don't know that, okay.
So, this is her letter, not.
So, we don't know if we have an impasse, we just don't know what the other attorney's reaction is to our position.
And the other thing that, the other, the other thing that's in this, other than what Mike has already answered, is she wants the release of the other appraisals on all the properties.
Well, is there any reason why we can't release those?
Is it public information?
Basically, at this point, it is.
Town council told me recently that we can release him, it's up to the board of selectmen, that it can create a problem releasing him because we could start more negotiations.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to release the appraisals of the other properties.
I'll second that, I think it's.
Any discussion?
She asked for a lot of their personal.
She was asking for a lot of them.
She was asking for hers, and she asked for, I would, number five is, I require we find a copy of the official praises for Angeliney busing property.
Let's have, let's have a discussion.
Does anybody see that as a problem?
Well, let's have a discussion before we vote, what is the potential problem for releasing, which effectively to me appears to be public information anyways? But what's the potential problem that the attorney is citing?
The, what he said was that we'll hope, it could possibly hold up the process because it could open up negotiations.
Or reopen negotiation?
If you don't have, he suggests, he advised, we wait until the other signed agreement. She doesn't wanna sign the agreement, she wants it first, so.
Betty, are you willing to take on that risk? Cause I am.
What's your thought?
No, I, I just think her lawyer should be able to tell her that, but don't you think so?
She's paying for him, I imagine, taking his advice.
You gotta listen to your lawyer.
You know, they're right, it is public information, if someone else came, I have to.
Somebody else might walk in here and say, I demand to see this.
Right.
And could.
But.
But until, the town council said, until we have signed agreements, like, we can give up bussings now because, well, no, we can't because he hasn't signed it yet, but once he, once he comes, fully covered. Right now, we have to drive him down because it's still a negotiation.
Somebody else will get it. But I'll say tonight, so.
What phase is that, David? That's, that's part of this issue here.
I don't know, but I think if my attorney told me that it's not a good idea, I'd still think I'd do it.
I know.
Yeah.
I don't think I'd do it either. I think if my attorney told me something, I'd kinda listen to.
For two hundred bucks, I don't think that you had to listen to.
Maybe more than that.
Well, certainly, we could give her her appraisal.
But she knows it already.
No, she, she doesn't, she's never seen it.
Initially, that's what she asked for.
Yeah, right.
Right, in the beginning, that's all she was asking for.
Could you provide her attorney with the minutes of, um, of the meeting when those appraisals were openly revealed? Well, the amounts are known, that's not like that.
No, he's talking about the town meeting vote, they're paying money.
Yeah.
We're assuming they're known, it sounds like to me they're not known.
I think with all the stuff that happened after it's known.
I think they wanna see. I think the question may be, she was questioning the value of her property going down.
Understood, yeah.
Right, and I think she may wanna see if they, if they talk about how they value it and so forth, why yours is being valued one way and the others not. That would be my guess, yeah.
Said that when she sat here last time, I was kinda what I go from her to her.
Yeah, I, I was under the impression every time she.
There's only two of us, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw.
I don't know if I think, this is a request, yeah.
Initially, you said you'd use it.
Okay, so, so now we're gonna read.
Now, we're gonna.
Right now, you're difficult, you can use any of them.
He was referring to giving. Why can't I never ask him?
So, then you should never go, be advised not to do it.
We want to watch the meeting. She wanted to watch the video.
We haven't answered, we haven't answered. We're waiting here, he was off saying.
Mike's available, he's answered.
Questions, which are not enough.
After you, Greg has put these questions to.
No, because we don't know if you want to, you wanna make that known, you know, we've asked, I asked, and we wanna take it, if the, the advice does not.
So.
But in a format that is, um, in accordance to how we are being advised by town council.
Will I write it for you?
Thank you.
Right, I appreciate it, that's very touching.
A few lines.
Well, I'll, I'll read it three or four times, but I'll show. I'll take it quite something out. That was a good discussion, I would treat it. Yeah, there, there is that description of what she does in form of property, of what.
She wants it all open space, she said, correct me if I.
Yeah, trails maintained.
Nothing whatsoever on her property, not even a pipe. That's how she said it.
Except for that marker.
Well, her marker, you know, her trail thing or her marker, she wants a nice sign, nothing other than she's asking for the, the five inch mark.
She's already moving away from it.
Certainly in Washington, it has these, these properties, it's a tower dollar, so it makes a little sense.
She also mentioned other people's property in town. And she did, but they were.
I told her to call the county.
I, I, that's, you know, I truly think that my intuition tells me. One of the things they discussed other places.
Right.
She did bring up to, to other, other property in, one day recently. We don't know like.
So you're, you're gonna, you're gonna do that?
My going to.
Like you can't see, you're gonna call her?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, I thought you said you.
No, he, they said if they had conservation restrictions, we'd give to her, I'm glad we, they, you know, presented with that.
Cause what it, we can say we're working on a conservation restriction without taking sort of, you can use the property, showing the agreed state, I mean, we have time, as part of the thing, we have been holding.
Sure, you can put that in that message tomorrow.
It's very, it's very dispiriting. The justice of the world, the justice of the Islam.
To show how serious we are.
But it, but it also shows that potential could be in the future, right?
Future year.
Right, I think it's important to put the, the.
Yeah, but she should know everything we know, and.
Of course.
For the old boss, through the boss, the.
Is that a document that we, that's available now, or?
No, that we just signed up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, but if you mention that in the language of tomorrow's, uh, communication, that would be helpful as well.
Cause she's, what's her, east, west coast, she's been traveling to Florida, she's not always here.
Well, she, she, she's here now, right?
No, well, she was here and went, she left to go to Florida.
Weeks ago.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't know how long they're going now, Florida.
Okay, cause I, I thought she was here in the summer, that she, I mean, she's around Tampa.
No, 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 not this summer, yeah, not this summer.
Actually, she had to get into, in one of Tampa's, I suppose, it's like, far, it was like.
She was gonna relocate to Florida.
Her daughter's going.
Oh, okay.
Her daughter was with her.
All good things will happen, we have two woolly parties, so it's, only, only good things can happen. Yes, though, glasses, glasses half full. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, great work.
Usual.
What?
I must say, this is like a Jim.
Why?
Yeah, what? Must be, must be correct. Sorry, I'm gonna stay for a second.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Unbelievable.
Okay.
Uh, you had to write up about the, that's.
Number five.
Uh, after the meeting, yes.
Okay, what time?
I'm guessing ten fifty minutes.
Okay.
I'm guessing.
Do you have a meeting today?
Yeah.
No, we don't, we didn't have any meeting, didn't officially meet.
Wasn't it, that's nine, that's how you post it?
No, it's maybe twenty nine.
Mr. Chris, help with that?
Yeah, you wanna see it?
Yeah.
Hold it, let me plug that. Oh, no, it's gonna be in here, right away.
I don't know, I can't, I don't know. I could think of it, but it wasn't a bargain, it's like on the side, but.
Anyway, moving on, Jim's here because there's, uh, Johnny had asked me to put on the agenda tonight about defense technique that was discussed over the, right, where is that, okay?
And where this is town property, I just need a vote of you to authorize me to, to look at those water funds to, to sort of, uh, uh, defense itself.
What's the range of cost we're talking about?
Uh, well, if we're taking, at one point, it was all the stuff to do with around the historical society building, but right now, we're just dealing with.
This doesn't matter.
Excuse me, Greg, no one can hear because it's not a conversation.
Move on, guys. No. I'm sorry, go ahead. So I asked the question, what was the, uh, range of costs for the fence?
Uh, they actually had a firm price on this one at twenty two hundred, whether it ended up being that or not, I don't know, we, I would work with the butter and.
Sure.
See what we could, see what was working for both of them, either we do have a musical fields and water account, that could be used for that, the only risk coming forward is in the spring, if something, you know, bad happened, we may come up a little short in that account, but.
The, the, the mice are available.
Well, no, it's, it's in the account, we have an account, obviously, for fields and water, it's usually used to deal with, uh, like painting the gazebo in Elm Park.
Oh, yes.
Repairing irrigation systems in the spring, I don't know how much irrigation system's gonna be in the spring, this year it was bad, it all clogged.
For split rail fence down the thing, I mean, I'd work with Jim and see what we wanted and stuff like that, I just need your authorization for it on.
One last question, weren't we getting a donation from somebody or something?
Oh, Claire was getting, oh, Claire was getting some of her money for a fence to go around.
Well, does she have money to do that?
The historical site around her.
I don't know, Claire said she.
I know, but you know, one that is, is probably, it's been years, and I'm, I'm not be able to get out, the congestion of all things, so, for me, and I, and I agree that it may not be the best idea, but some.
Is there a better idea? Could, could it be? Are we ready for discussion?
Oh, absolutely, I, I, I'm right down.
It's, it's, if you really wanna do it, do it right, two or three thousand dollars.
Is it really?
Sure is.
Because I just said today to, uh, you know, I want, I was up at the beach, though, and I did try to reach you, but you had already left, your service came on.
Yeah.
Um. What would be most attractive there? Would, would it be, uh, providees, would it be shrubbery? You know, we, we made a blunder down there, I think, way back.
It's, it's just got more of a.
It has, you know, we planned for the little, took the little building and she changed it from, um, historical building, then we rested it. And then it was gonna be self sustaining, and then all the traffic came there, which was coming there anyway before we changed its use.
Interesting, it was.
Well, that's because.
You know, we're already down, I mean, it's not, because we said, and if, um, if it's the help the opposite, it's up ahead, but I think it's a slight, um, um, you know, this, this two teams play at the same time all the time, um, it's just not one cop for, for a child, it gets, it's crazy. Like, they don't have a legal pocket.
A comedy.
You know, a hundred, you know, even a hundred and seventeen spaces, that's a player, I think, or something like that.
Well, didn't, didn't fans communicate, say, no, that they didn't want to put this?
Well, they didn't have a problem with this part, we're transferring money at the time, you know, whole thing, they don't have a problem with putting a fence without property, I think the problem they had was because the historical site and the out of town department, and Golden New Soccer isn't go out of town department, that all of it being lumped together, they said, this is a bad present, that we'll build defenses for private organizations. You know, so they just kinda said, you know what, we don't want to.
Private organizations like that.
That's the part. It's town, no property, it's town, no property, it's got, how they handle, no control.
They were allowed to.
And that's a responsibility.
Well, it's, it happens.
But you know, you know what, we tried, we tried to work through that.
It happened. But do I wanna make it look worse than it is? Do I wanna make the investment to make it look better?
I gotta tell you right now, I'm looking at our results every day.
Yeah, which doesn't look so great.
I don't know, I mean, if you, yeah, but your, your alternative is very expensive.
So you. Right, we, you said that right now, we're looking at a, maybe a twenty two hundred dollar expenditure, or what, what, to do it right, what criteria would you be talking about?
I think you, if you wanted to do that. They said make it right, make the pocket, okay, I'd look at fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, easy, oh, with a parking lot as well, with a full plan, full market, yeah.
Yeah, what we were gonna do, we were, we were gonna change the fee, and everything, and, and it might have been, but actually, no, it's.
Right, I remember, yes.
Now, do you see this twenty two hundred dollar project, um, kind of falling apart, and would we have to redoing it, repairing it?
As opposed to what, at which point? Cause I, I gotta tell you.
I just think it needs to look better than this, opposed to real fence point.
I, I know, but. It's been five years, no one's come up with one, no one has, it just keeps getting shot.
Well, it needs to be corrected, it needs to be fixed. Well, it needs to be corrected. It needs to be fixed.
That's it.
You're you're putting up with it a lot.
Yes.
Um, then we had a label and an issue and now, you know, we had to picture. Steve, what you what you you know, do you want like a what's going on over there? Cause it's soccer.
Oh, for the soccer problem.
I always like green. We always talk about it more, but it's it's up to the 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 butters. I mean, I have nothing to do with it.
What do you mean, like green?
I'd rather go with like treaties and things like that, but it's up to your butters. I mean, I mean.
That's that's what I'm thinking today. The estimate costs that much?
I understand, but you're talking about going down a whole night to that one. So whatever people.
Does it have to go the whole way? What it have to?
Yeah. Yeah, pretty much. Those each other. It's wealthy.
Everybody's in the far rounds now.
The noises.
V seven, we will agree. It'll be lovely, but it is expensive.
I know that. What, you're gonna look at the bigger picture again? Not if you're gonna do that, cause it's a way for a lot of people less parking. People don't know where they go and people have no idea what to do with that. It's like it's not zero. It's it's really not their fault. It's it this this.
There's no guidance this way to go.
Exactly. No one knows what the council from.
That's why we started the plans on it. We're gonna go through it, but we halted it because of a lot of issues with other neighbors in here. So like I said, it's a it's a butter issue that you're gonna have to work through. When one day we come back in and sit down and go like we talked about the whole different plans. But I think Jim said before, once we start it, we shouldn't start it till it's complete and try to give ourselves a deadline, right? I know it's tough, right? And in order to financially develop.
See, in in the in the same respect, sometimes we definitely, you know, we have to put a Band-Aid on something. We the fence needs to go up now. We we would love to have a regular parking lot and all kinds of things down there, but we're not ready to spend fifty to eighty thousand, so we need to fix an immediate, a temporary way, but we need to fix the problem that it's not our promise.
Well, that's that's a big right, a big deal.
So that's what happens in government. Things get shuffled, not because of malintention, because we have a bigger goal. We have our eyes on a bigger prize and we can't get to that prize now, so we're gonna have to fix the little problem right now. So I I would be I'd hate to do it, but I'd spend money, but um hopefully people won't run into it and smash, you know, smash that fence and it'll last us for a few years while we figure out what we're gonna do on terms. So I'd like to, you know, make a motion to uh go ahead and do the fence project. What's the name of that fund again? I'm always gonna ask this question because the whole fields and water. And how does that fund get replenished?
Annual appropriation of town.
Okay.
Out of the own bus block.
And how long did it take to build twenty-two hundred bucks?
Oh, the account? The account is an annual appropriation of sixteen thousand.
Okay, that's fine. So I don't like to spend money, but I'd like to know where it's coming from and how we get that pocket replenished.
Better get replenished every year. It's our, like I said, basically it's for dealing with the irrigation systems, uh made them so certainly the gazebo and things like that, uh the fertilization programs of certain that sound complex. That's basically what it's all used for. It used to be about thirty thousand and paid the water bills for things too, but since everybody else now hit the drops.
And so you're not gonna suggest, should we s reach out to um the historical folks and just let just move forward on our own?
Well, this was always this had not this this was always part of the bigger plan, but by doing this, it doesn't have any effect of it it never tied really as a separate. It was part of an overall bunch of fences, but if you did this, it doesn't affect what you. It's still.
That's that's a whole other project.
It's a whole other thing.
We're gonna take care of the posted rail fence going from Main Street home to home to Florida.
Right. Two hundred twenty feet, am I right?
How many?
Two floor.
So I have a motion on the floor. I should press a second.
What would vinyl come?
Vital.
Of course, there's a visualization.
It was the most cost effective way I would issue.
Cut.
Plus vinyl, vinyl was about fifty bucks every eight feet, seven dollar a.
What was that money?
I I just.
You could look, you could look at that.
Real real.
Just did one.
I just didn't know what I would be and of course then people will say, um, we can't see I visit fence on Coleman Road, um, people.
Oh.
Say they can't see when we come in there, I can uh.
It was a. If you look at that, I do all the first one of that.
Yeah.
That's fast. I'm done. Something you understand. I'm done.
I just don't think it's I don't I don't think it's gonna look that great. I think vinyl would.
I I think I think it would look nice on a property. Yeah, you could you could make it look good. You don't have the money to make it look good. That's a fact. It's my personal opinion.
I sympathize with you. I know I do.
I we're doing the best we can. That's all asking for us as well.
Yeah. But if I mentioned it to the chairman, I'm like shrubbery, cause I'm still looking at that.
Yeah.
You know, you can say you can say vinyl, you mean like a vinyl posted rail fence or a vinyl fence?
Mm-hmm.
So it's.
Who do we know that's in the line of business? Everybody?
That's appropriate.
Would you like to explore that?
What's that?
Vinehl.
I think.
It's a health.
Yeah, I think so. Absolutely. I think whatever I think if we appropriate the funds and they can explore.
The funds have already been appropriate. What I'm looking for, if you permission, is to put a fence up on town property.
Yeah. Okay, I I.
And I'll work with Jimmy on figuring out a way to make this palable.
It's that's what we voted, a fence on town.
But I can still do the original intent of the plan to make sure that's faithful.
This is absolutely whatever can be used for material that's within that twenty-two hundred dollar range is fine.
Yeah, give you a.
My opinion, I think, I think. Now, would the day was vinyl.
I I think he's asking permission from us to put a fence on town on property.
I'd like to make a motion to say yes.
You would not not say like, no, you can't.
No, I think that you're authorized me to put a fence on town. If we work with Jim Sheehan on the type and the cost, then it becomes palable to everybody.
I think it's okay. We can do that with consensus. We don't have to vote. We can just say yes.
Okay. Think we do it.
You can put it on town. Could because you're putting it on town property.
Town property.
So that's the issue.
You want to vote it?
Okay, sorry.
Right.
You make the motion.
So I need to withdraw the other motion because the other motion's spoken about tonight. So let's just withdraw the motion on trying to stay about spending five hundred dollars. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to put a fence on that.
Send me. I'll be. But. I'm looking out. I just know if I had to look at that.
It's 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 a lot of trouble there.
Just see the plan. He's like.
It's all.
Well, the plan we're talking about.
That's what.
We we held off because there's a lot of issues with parking. We're gonna have a very long uphill battle. Like Jimmy and I have talked about it a million times from that area, it's the butters.
They lived it.
And parking is the issue, the primary issue of the field. Field itself, almost by the breaking down of the, but that was the primary issue.
Well, it's town prop it's town property. Should we be relocating the soccer fields and use that property for something else?
Soon as you can get at least four or five million dollars to uh.
Also, the lay is a neighborhood field.
Right.
And maybe a lot someplace else.
Yep.
Again, for you know, it's the same it's the same thing. You can't go fight against that money for people to go there and park or park. Can we build on it?
Not that you don't wanna build on that. That's a beautiful car. It's it's right along the road that you wanna keep that.
The lay is buildable.
If if anything, you wanna shrink it down to one, just one soccer field or one utility field, depending on who was soccer doesn't wanna give it up. Beautiful. We've been working on it for so long. Yeah, and then you just take everything else and push it to busing again, which I heard busing was almost done.
Still a couple of.
I know. I heard he spent a piece of.
You came at the right time. It was done.
But that means you have a whole new window of a new committee's gonna to be established and you're gonna have to tack around a lot of money.
When you establish a committee?
Cause there's gonna be a lot of work inside of that area to get it to move down.
You need that for another decade.
No, be.
Well, no, because some of the other could uh require it had to be used for other things for the next five, seven years.
Alright, busing, which um the way it was brought across work could be utilized for recreation and other the other two properties were primarily for conservation slash other things.
They have restrictions.
Right, those two have restrictions, definitely. She had to do something else. I hope not.
Thank you.
Something else could be worked on.
Thank you.
Show you the.
Okay, so we're done with the fence.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Great.
Go on.
Thanks, Betty. I'm glad you helped me on this stand.
Well, I just every time I go by, I listen to if I were living there.
I know. Yeah, right, yeah.
Now, back to your agenda.
Yeah.
The recreation pod was canceled until next Monday, which was off course for six o'clock.
Yes.
I just spoke to Pam, she said I heard. Um, Steve's pod was five minutes and it wasn't here, so he's here to ask your permission.
Well, we we wanna get it. I wanna get on this stand. Um, I talked to Greg briefly about it a while ago, which was about storage down at the Falls coming up. They've done a lot more work down there. Um, storage wise, what's going on with that shed? Um, is there anything gonna happen over this year with the shed?
Hmm, I guess. The final plans are in. So the committee will have to the minds committee will have to have a meeting to begin the process. My guess is the process will begin on this side with the program fourteen to play this way.
Mm-hmm.
I can't see that building being an issue until next summer.
Right, because that's that's why I was asking for is if that building going down, I don't wanna be in the middle of the season to be told it's coming down. So. I guess I we we're gonna ask for a storage container, three drops of twenty foot storage containers. Um, they're about seventy-five bucks a month for us to do it. We were gonna try and see if you wanted to do it behind communications, that area. Um, so it's way out in the way.
Alright, so I think I see Nancy show the email. Feel like it's starting to have their rent down.
Can you let us know what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's you know a storage container?
I don't know.
Yeah.
And I I when you saw Nancy, I don't know what Nancy.
Yeah, well, storage is. I should direct it to you anyway.
Sweet sir Nancy.
Yeah, it's um we've talked about doing a storage container versus the equipment shutters down there right now, cause it's it's almost to the point, that's what we were talking about, is it's almost to the point where you might be downholding that building at some point in the near future.
The condition is so bad, so just.
That, and I think that is.
It's not it's not the end of the plan. It's probably.
Right.
Okay.
So rather than go into the middle of our season worrying about it, we figured we might wanna put a storage container down there, twenty foot storage container. We like to keep our nets aside.
Try to be proactive.
There you go.
Afterward?
Yes.
Storage container, what kind of storage do you need? Is it like a one-eight-hundred thou guy job? Did they go on site and do that?
They have uh.
Sort of.
Do they? Okay, I just know that I've seen that on the look insurance.
Um, it's it's um it's. There's there's different varieties of um the ones that I reported, but based off the size of the nets and stuff, we put, we have a twenty foot would be more sufficient. I didn't see anything that was, you had to drop down to a ten foot, which didn't work for us because the whole store nets at ten feet length, so we were careful of it. Um, so we're looking at a twenty foot stored. I just don't know where to put it. If we did do it, and that's what I wanna get, one, get an idea if we really need it this year. Um, and two, if we do do it, if you guys wanna support one down there, where can we put it?
Is it worthy of the same one?
I think we should do it. I think we we have time. The only issue is I'm coming in, I mean, I'm not moving anything until probably the last week of August when I come all back into vacation. But at that week, I'm gonna be pushing hard to get everything down there. Probably takes two or three days to get down the process to order. So.
So Donna Shanahan, correct?
Will that be?
That would be a pot.
Oh, a pot.
Since we still do our small stuff.
Would that be comfortable?
No, I'd actually have to move it come November because we just.
Get it out of there.
Yeah, seventy-five to drop it, seventy-five to 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 return it back to them. We'll only use it for like a three months, so. They know that too. Something like that. If that's the case, if we move our equipment right from November back into for springtime over at Shanahan, we have a permit on that. I'm only thinking in the long run, but I know it's eventually gonna there's gonna be a equipment shut down there if if.
A permanent one.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I didn't want you.
Yeah, this makes sense to me. And and of course, somebody always says, did you think about this?
Sure.
Well, something.
Sounds like the way you presented it, it makes perfect sense.
Alright, so let let me can I recap? We're gonna have what at the pines and what at Shanahan and what time?
The the pine itself, we have um pre-K through U eight to play soccer.
Right.
So we have all their equipment that needs to stay out the pines, all the soccer nets, all the balls are. Um, so we wanted to have a we wanted to actually drop a actual container down.
A container down there, okay.
Yep, for the for the end of August till mid-November.
Sure, that's fine. And seventy-five to drop, seventy-five to pick up.
Right, and then seventy-five a month, something like that.
Seventy-five a month. And what about Shanahan?
Yep. Shanahan has a permit shut. We we already we have going through that. Yeah, that one's set. That's never doesn't have to change. It'll happen.
Okay. I was just thinking, you're gonna drop a container down at Shanahan.
No, the football has.
And your butters are gonna come after us. Unless you put a roof on it.
Yeah, we maybe for lean.
Alright, I get it. Now, it's fine. So that's fine. I think it's.
Are we still moving the waterfall right now?
No, waterfall is done and hopefully the waterfall that we we haven't finished, we've been working through the engineering piece now. We're close to getting plans to Greg and having everything go through.
He would move it, had it moved and then somebody would call, so I would.
Oh, right. I did get you a call, so obviously the people.
The the name was a happy right now.
Maybe it's okay.
As far as like.
It didn't didn't run into a position.
In July, they're fabulous center. Yeah, a lot of names actually were over at the event, so I'm really happy.
Are you expanding soccer programs anymore this term?
Can't. Um, it's actually.
Okay, that's that's the answer.
We're we're at a nice steady pace. We're increasing maybe, you know, let's see, five or six kids per eight.
Not till you get a place to put everybody.
Uh, it's five or six kids, but you can't expand because the town is only so big. So and we've been going door to door. We found about thirty new families on this side of town as it is, so there are there will be expansion in it. But it's small.
Um, because that didn't mean you were saying like we were talking, we were out of the conversation.
I just wasn't able to catch up, Greg.
Yeah.
No, what happens a lot, like a person will make a request.
Talk to them. Yeah, they do talk.
I go like like Steve would send the request to Nancy and say, I need to be on the agenda to talk about this. Nancy shows to me and said, this this is where they're proposing. Is there, we try to get information before the meeting happens, so we have to deal. He had proposed down next to the cell tower. I had clicks, we leased that there and I had to go down and see the footprint of it. Now, basically they lease.
I'm gonna talk to them.
Yeah, basically if you look at the tree line and that little electrical box, you'd have to stay between that and the little the uh just looks like God rail shut inside the thing. That'd be the spot you have. To estimate, they lease.
Maybe Friday, then I come down and grab you and we'll go out there and they go.
Sure, but I you said like next to the bell tower. I wanted to go down. You said the spotted button, maybe the road, that's their road. So I gotta be kind of be careful where I put it. If nobody pay a lot to lease that.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you just tell me where what the where we agree and where we could possibly put it if we need. I I'm just thinking in the long run, cause there's quite a few pieces of equipment that aren't gonna fit into that small equipment shutters off all the overwhelming pack on right now. So I I know like baseball, then I wanna put something someplace for a little while and I was in that.
Field maintenance.
Field maintenance of the various groups. They all have access to those.
No, try to go.
Nothing.
Breaking problems and things.
Yeah, the lawnmower, the lawnmower was kept with the highway park. It's um directed by them as a dragger front, that's moving out the fields and that shit and just some bases and some lime and bigger. I mean, if it's something that finger wouldn't be that's almost impossible.
Yeah, the sporting, yeah.
Steve, are you saying you wanted to build it and you don't know?
Because I.
Well, if if everybody's filed with the select and final putting it down there, then yeah, we probably would rent it because honestly, it's it's I think that gives you a little more leeway for something that was.
Yeah, I guess I can't see anything behind you almost. I mean, I don't want to guarantee that things would be at Christmas for that thing, but it's not going anywhere right now.
If that's the case, then we wouldn't rent it this year, but if we needed, then we obviously know it's gonna, you know, next fall, cause it'll probably be next fall, we come.
There's they'll still be, they're not gonna begin any development of that area until they're done.
I can't see that being done anytime in the next two, three months.
So we're not gonna prove anything until you absolutely need need it.
Right. That's fine. I just wanna make sure we're all the same kind of.
The consensus, I would guess, between Betty and I, I think we're three is, I mean, if you feel that you need it, I think that would be something that we. We would not wanna prove anything now until we actually.
It. Yeah, that's right.
The the cost of it, were you saying soccer would pay for it or?
Well, it's gonna be our equipment and if the other groups wanna use it, then I would probably look to the uh someone else's.
Red.
Yeah. But it's it's one of the things where you probably need one anyways in the long run down there while they're constructing a or it's gonna be, I think it's gonna happen over time. So we just wanna be a little uh prepared for that area. That's it.
That's it? No plans tonight, no good drawings?
Next month.
I don't know what I'm bringing in. Don't know.
Sample sample.
Mill River Winery.
Um, yes.
I've heard some of them in the future.
Tat, okay. It worked. Good. What we're gonna talk about that one, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Okay, need anything yet?
No, not really. Did you, shall we amend the agenda, put you on there so you can talk about cable for a minute?
It's too late, too late to amend the agenda.
Too late?
It's gotta be within a party.
No, I'm not interested.
Being stuck.
Okay. I'll talk to you on one-on-one and that way it won't constitute a meeting. Okay, that's fine. Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
Bye, I talked to Greg one-on-one.
Yeah.
You wanna check him, there will be a button before you go too fast sometimes, they. True.
Yeah, exactly. Very great.
I just talked to my daughter.
Did she did your daughter still live? I didn't even know who was living.
Yeah, she said she's old house.
That's yeah, that was, yes, you need.
I have any notification.
She has.
I wonder what she got.
Does it come?
Does it come?
I wonder.
Yeah.
You should.
I get that.
She, she should be in the house.
Is that the house front?
Ken, did you need to speak in the air?
Excuse me, that's what, that's what I asked.
Well, that, is that the house front you're talking about?
Yeah, right front, um, right on the baseline.
Yeah, we should get her out there and say, look, this is for, probably get her in there.
She knows.
Well, she needs to have a, you know, to be able to weigh in on it.
Absolutely.
Oh, she feels about talking about it.
Sure.
I won't say.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
You have your problems, your troubles.
Ken, did you, do we wanna have chat afterwards?
Yeah, for a couple of, almost not.
Right. Thanks for waiting.
Okay, like, is there anything else that we need to-
I, I think Terrell said, I wanted to mention just one thing real quick. It looks like there was a cou- couple of issues about the alarm system and bad, no, but it looks like, uh, we-
Sounds like the acting chief took care of that.
Yeah, they went through it and that they had the, 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 the representative from the state. And I don't know the details, but I guess there's a temporary permit.
Yeah, but if it is temporary, the school staff, there's no problems, the cost of what we-
That was my only concern, to be known.
What the contract was proposing initially, the cost of the cutaway now, you know, to what needs to be done to the satisfaction of the state fire marshal.
Oh, the state fire marshal, okay, that's fine. So there's a temporary, uh, condition. It's a conditional approval, if you will. And the, everything I read, from what I understand, there seems to be no issue in terms of having a full alarm system in place and approved by the time the kids go to school.
I asked, Greg told me that.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully.
'Cause that's what the letter from, uh, uh, Mr. Castrenals, uh, Derek Castrenals sent.
That's in, in- Right, and he told, he told you, you and, you know, felt on.
All the issues. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And he was meeting with somebody from Boston and, you know, I know there are summer programs there, so whatever the kids are using the whole building at times. I just want to make sure that everyone is there, everybody's mind.
Yeah, okay, good.
Good, that's, that's huge.
Just to let the public know, because I know there was some emails and-
People get nervous and hear things. I mean, really, that's a lot.
Sure.
You know that. Okay, um, do you wanna make a motion to return Nancy, anything else you need to know about? We covered everything. Charlie, thank you. Did you get your, your stuff? Everything going? I'll go with you if, maybe.
We'll find out tonight when we get home.
All right, well, thank you for trying. We just couldn't hear over the conversation.
All right. And thank you, Nancy, for helping us together, really.
We're all set.
All set, thank you.
Your motion to, your, your chair.
So, vote. All right.
Very, very nice.